After six. And let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight for February 4th.
I'm going to go through February 4th agenda.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now we get to the good stuff. Special recommendations and reports. So, student reports to the board. We are going to hear from Kenneworth first.
Hello, my name is Kaitlyn and I'm an eighth grader at Kenneworth School. Our KJHS band students performed in the gym to a packed house. The band demonstrated their dynamic musical abilities and everyone was quite impressed. The attendance for dances has increased significantly over the years and the Winter Wonderland Dance was no exception. Leadership is doing a fabulous job of decorating and planning for our dances and our PTA essay provides wonderful food. Seventy-five students purchased tickets at the door of the dance alone. The school spirit feels fantastic at these dances. Speaking of spirit, the week of December 9th.
Why didn't you wear that to the meeting?
It is over 13 students participated in holiday dress-up activities that range from crazy holiday hats, holiday pajamas, and of course, the ugly sweaters made in appearance. Seventh graders were able to experience their first final set, final schedule, December 18th through December 20th. Winter break is always exciting and coming back to school is always great as well. On a sad note, KJHS hosted a memorial on January 11th for a wonderful former of Lloyd. Lloyd Hale was our late custodian for over eighteen years and retired just about a year ago. The school is a better place for having worked with Lloyd. He will be missed. Also, on January 11th, three of our students were honored for their essay-writing abilities. The VFW Hall Awards consists of the firefighter of the year, the police officer of the year, and honor students who complete impressive essays in relation to a program the VFW provides. For those of you who don't know what the VFW stands for, it stands for Veterans of the Foreign Wars. These, this year, KJHS took a clean sweep, first through third. Colton Floyd took first, Taylor Fisher took second, and Raymond Wong took third. On January 16th and 17th, the Casa Grande counselors came to KJHS to talk about the elective offerings and complete course sign-ups with the eighth graders. On January 23rd, KJHS hosted a huge group of thirty-plus community members and elementary students for coffee with the principal. Typically, the group doesn't get much larger than about eight people, so the massive uptick in attendance was exhilarating and allows us the opportunity to display the amazing teaching and learning that happens here every day. January 24th was Disney Day and an active event rally. Students received public awards for their ability to demonstrate Kenneworth's life skills throughout their past couple of months. Athletic teams were acknowledged and it's a fun time all around. Speaking of sports, girls volleyball just came to an end, as did boys basketball. Our seventh grade girls volleyball brought home a pennant this year and eighth grade teammate, and the eighth grade team made a strong offensive showing. Our eighth grade boys basketball team also brought home a pennant with the seventh grade boys looking tough for next year. A special thanks to Mr. Schmidt, who has finished his final season coaching basketball at Kenneworth Junior High because he will be retiring at the end of the year. Now we are into wrestling season and there are over fifty athletes working out on the mass. This is a great time to be a cool athlete. During this weekend of January 24th and 25th, eleven KJHS band students were selected to participate in a Sonoma County-wide honor band. These students performed in a band of eighty-five top musicians from the schools all around the county. Thank you.
Very good. Next up, Petaluma Junior High.
Hi, I'm Jordan Beardsley, an eighth grader at Petaluma Junior High. I'm a fellow and a seventh grader at Petaluma Junior High. The PJHS events. Uh, the sixth graders from a bunch of different schools came and toured our school, our campus, and I was personally part of that and it was very fun getting to show them around. The winter concert. It's the end of the girls volleyball and boys basketball. Despite a losing record, the seventh grade boys basketball team was competitive in many of their games and lost by, they lost several by just a few points. They also took second place in the UKI tournament over winter break. The eighth grade boys basketball team finished their season with an overall record of twelve to nine, which included a third-place finish in the Rincon Valley Tournament and second-place in the UKI Tournament. Our seventh grade girls volleyball team was in, um, I don't know how to say it. Uh, was in the league championship all season before finishing ultimately second place overall with a strong ninety-three record. The eighth grade girls volleyball team showed tremendous improvement in last year that finished with a four in a record. The second semester rally was, um, something that leadership put on and it was, we had a bunch of games and we played music and it was a really fun thing to put on. The author visit Kate Miltford of the author Green Glass House came and talked to us about how to get on the writer's block and she told us a really fun story out of probably that. The base side challenges, participations, we are doing things like egg drop, uh, like structure making and today we did, um, paper airplane and pictionary and that was really fun.
But what, what is the base side challenge?
It's basically a local science lab where, um, your school gets, uh, has a team and they get to compete in events and, um, the more points you gain for your school, then the higher you place.
So it's for science?
Yeah.
What's happening in class? Ms. Brookslong's class is working on the center circle so that we can beautify our school. There's a team test in Ms. Payne's math eighth grade class where all the team members collaborate on one test. Making eggplant nuggets and independent living, so they're making their own food. Dancing in PE, we're doing square dancing right now. Building houses in sixth grade STEM, so they're just building houses out of, yeah, whatever, brick, 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 bricks. Creating masterpieces in our class, they're hard at work just making their art pieces.
There's a Dempsey's dine and donate tomorrow. There is a City Co-op Festival at seven PM on the 12th and then our wrestling is on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Thank you.
Okay, McKinley and PAX, you're doing that together? Is that right? Okay.
Um, hi, I'm Hadel.
And I'm Julia. And we're representing McKinley and PAX. So our living vision, McKinley Inspires, was created last year to help our community focus on the values of our school, which stand for innovation, nurturing spirit, STEM focus, project-based learning, inclusivity, responsibility, engagement, and student-centered learning. And all of our values are being integrated into McKinley's curriculum as teachers continue to receive training. McKinley teachers and staff work together to develop lessons and build a nurturing environment for their students to grow. So, one of the many family engagement opportunities we offer to our families is the famous salsa festival. Here, classes use tomatoes from our school garden to create class salsas for an annual competition. Families and students gather together as a community to come and taste and vote on their favorite salsas. Overall, this is one of our most popular events of the year.
Have you already had it?
Yes.
We need invitation.
Yes, we need. Especially salsa festival.
Overall, this is one of our most popular events and families can also create their own salsa and bring it to vote as well.
Um, we have a program called Interconvio where parents from McKinley can come and where native Spanish speakers and non-native Spanish speakers can come and teach one another and this language exchange builds a connected McKinley community.
So we also have intercultural café, which is a wonderful opportunity for our community to get information about PTA and other programs that happen at McKinley. Parents are given the opportunity to get information the following week after the PTA meeting.
Um, we also have a PTA event called the Fleet Market, which to celebrate the McKinley community.
So our PTA brings so many wonderful programs and extras to our school. This year, we broke the record and we raised fifty-six thousand, a hundred and seventy-six dollars for a Jogathon.
Okay.
And because of this, we are able to receive supply money for our classrooms and hire a garden coordinator and get an upgraded stereo, stereo system and for all of our TK classrooms.
Um, and the dinosaur in Sarkis. Um, we also have, um, movie night, which is a family fun night where students and families are invited to a family to view a movie that the school votes on each month.
That's monthly?
Even my sister's cold.
And then we also have the Winter Carnival, which is another time for families to get together and celebrate community. And we have special programs like the Giv'n Tree where our community provides holiday presents for over thirty families in need. And this is where families at McKinley volunteer to buy a present for somebody else at McKinley who might not be able to afford one. And then there was also a performance by the TK and kindergarteners with famous James Kay.
Um, for our field trips, we had, the third graders went on a, um, a field trip to Cal Skate where they did STEM projects and then they roller skated afterwards. And then in the other picture, it is kindergarten coming back from a, a.
So for PAX, we also have the seventh graders at Mount Hermon, which is one of the highlights at the beginning of the seventh grade year, and they go to camp to get to know each other in the beginning. And then, uh, we also have the sixth graders at the Charles, Charles Schultz Museum. And then we also have a Rock and Roll Day where every first Wednesday of the month, our students receive a prize for walking, biking, et cetera, just promote being more environmentally conscientious. And then this other image of kindergarteners performing their ABC fashion show, which is really adorable.
We also have an art docent program, um, for TK through sixth grade where parent volunteers come and teach students how to do certain art styles, as well as background informations on the art pieces. Um, for fourths through sixth graders, they also have a genius art project, which they can research whichever topic they choose and then do a presentation on.
So at PAX, our the band are some of the electives we offer. We also offer film studies, robotics, and food science, as well as many others.
We, for our Spanish class, we did a Dia de los Muertos project where the whole school made of bandas to honor their dead ancestors and then the younger kids made gingerbread houses and they labeled each piece of the house and then constructed it.
And here are some other photos of the seventh graders in school getting a presentation from one of the parents.
Um, in the first image, this is the kindergarteners live streaming with the zookeeper after they adopted an elephant, so that's in the process of it. And then the other picture is the Santa Rosa Symphony Brass Group coming to talk about music and performing for them. Also, we had a assembly from Mr. Callahan who talked to the students about perfect dependents.
We also had a program, Just Two Moms Come In, to talk to students about inclusivity with kids with disabilities. So last week, McKinley and PAX participated in the Great Kindness Challenge where we had many spirit days to promote kindness throughout our school. Some of the highlights include Peace and Love Day, Peace, Love, and Kindness Day, where students get dressed as if they're students, which you can see here.
Um, this last week for the Great Kindness Challenge, we have Spirit Day each day. And the first image is from a crazy soft day and the second is where you dress up with someone who promotes kindness and while the student is dressed up as a custodian. This is also an image from Kindness Week where I collected quotes from each teacher and then put it in front of the entry right that, um, we, this student. And then lastly, this is our school's magnet design that was designed by someone from Adidas for free and we actually have them here if we could back them.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Deejay's not gonna be happy. They're gonna have to cover the.
Um, can we guys show Justin pictures of Gary? Gary is very special.
Work, you want it? Well, you need to take, right, because since they just, you guys wanna take off before the next presentation, you guys, I'm sure you have a lot of work and other things to do.
All right, the next presentation is from PEF.
I am sad to say you don't have any photos of Gary.
I can stand up.
You don't get magnets, so you get swag.
There we go.
I will introduce myself, I don't want to turn my back to you. My name is Maureen Highland, I'm the executive director of the Petaluma Educational Foundation and this is our board president, Jane Rabbit. So we're both gonna share with you tonight, um, I'll share an overview of PEF and then Jane will get a little bit more specific in the facts and figures of our support and partnership with Petaluma City Schools. So, um, I will hand it to you. Thank you. So, I'm gonna stand on here. Um, so as I said, my name is Maureen, I work with the Petaluma Educational Foundation. I, I think I have the best job in the world. I get to work with everybody in this community to make sure that our schools are supported and our students feel empowered, empowered and have all the opportunity they can get to go far in their academic dreams. So we work closely with every school district in town. There are a few of you. So, we support thirty-eight TK through twelve schools. We have about twelve thousand students, about twelve thousand two hundred and forty-seven students, of students that we serve annually through our grant program and our scholarship program. In addition, we run the Alphabet Soup Benefit Thrift Stores. So, yay for that too, thank you. So, we work very, very closely, as I said, with the districts and educators. Um, as I look around the group tonight, how many of you received a PEF grant even in the last few? Several. So, we support curriculum-based programs. We do not do capital campaigns or staffing, but what we do is enable your teachers to dream big, allow your district to have a little more flexibility when it comes to your funding, and then also for us to be able to really make sure every student is supported in the way they should be supported throughout their academic career. So, with that, I'm gonna share, let Jane share a little bit specifically about Petaluma City Schools and then I'll wrap up.
Thanks, Maureen. So, PEF grant program has provided to the city schools, uh, three, over three million seven hundred thousand dollars since nineteen eighty-three. The PEF scholarship program has provided three million five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and three hundred and eighty-five awarded since nineteen ninety. So, just if you're aware, so the scholarship is for all students in the Petaluma City School District seniors for when they're graduating. And then Alphabet Soup Benefit Thrift Stores, um, supports our mission. So, our, our, our message there is to shop, because you're helping your students, donate, because if we sell it, we're helping your students, and volunteer, because that helps us provide that. All right.
I'm that good.
So, from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and eight, Petaluma City School District Schools were awarded over almost two million dollars from PEF. This academic year, the Petaluma City School District campuses will receive more than seventy-five thousand dollars out of the total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and seventy, three hundred and thirty-seven in PEF Impact Grant Awards, not including the Annual Ad Day Program, the Live Theater Program, and the Special Garden Club Grant being provided to McKinley. This is just a picture of the, some of the seniors getting their scholarships at award ceremonies. Last year, we rewarded two, two hundred and nineteen thousand and a hundred and fifty dollars to the members of the class in twenty nineteen. Two hundred and fifty-eight students received three hundred and thirty-eight scholarships from sixty-six PEF managed funds. The majority of the awards were given to Casa Grande and Petaluma High School students attending two, four-year colleges and vocational programs. And students from all seven local high schools are eligible to apply. All my children, I had three that went through the system, they've all got scholarships. Uh, I've been a reader on the scholarships, what I really like, it's not just your four-point plus kids. There are scholarships for kids who are going to technical vocational school and don't have high GPA. And, uh, for me, that's like so important because our really excelling kids get recognized, but this is a way for the kids that aren't at the top academically to be recognized. And I think that's it.
Okay, so this, uh, the next slide. This gentleman went, is at McDow School. So when we went and awarded their grant last year, he was seated with his dad on the multi-floor and when they turned around and said, "You won this grant," he turned around to Katie Rooki, who's our longtime program manager, and was like, "Yeah." So, and his dad's like, "He's so excited." And like, "Okay, we need your photo." So, again, I just wanna wrap up the scene. We're here to partner with you. We currently partner very closely with your educators and the people who are on the, you know, ground in your schools and it really is meant to be something that this community became so proud of, that we support every single student along the way. PEF does not receive state or government funding. We receive funding from individuals and it is partnerships. So, what we do is because this community makes it possible and they wanna invest in that effort, so they support their districts, they support their teachers, their schools, and for us, they support artwork to make sure we're all working together. So, um, as Jane said, we have given over seven point one million dollars in combined awards for the last thirty-eight years and, um, we plan to be here for the next thirty-eight plus, so we will continue to work closely with you. We are, we have grown because we had some very dedicated community members in the beginning who were thoughtful in how they created the foundation and we grew at a pace that we can actually, you know, really invest in ourselves, invest in you, and really build, no pun intended, a strong foundation. So, we are here, we are growing, but we are also small enough to be flexible and proactive with the needs that you have in schools. Okay, so I think, I'll let you get on with the rest of your evening, but we just wanna say thank you for the work you're doing and you for all the things that are happening in education locally and we're excited to be a part of it. So, thank you.
That was awesome.
It's okay. All right, moving on. We are now gonna hear from Side by Side, Youth Thrive, and Community Counseling Programs.
So hello everyone, I'm Adrian Maldonado. I'm the program manager for Youth Thrive and I'll be speaking on behalf of our agency and Denise Mendoza, who's the program manager for community counseling. So those will be the two programs that I'll be, um, speaking to you guys about. So, uh, Sunny Hill Services is formerly known as, I mean, Side by Side is formerly known as Sunny Hill Services. Sunny Hill Services came about in like eighteen ninety-five, uh, and they started off as an orphanage in Marin. As the years went by, um, we've evolved, uh, but we consider ourselves to be, you know, at the forefront of best practices when it comes to child welfare. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, sorry, July two thousand and eighteen, we rebranded and became Side by Side. I think that, that name and brand embodies our work that we do with our students, uh, with our partners, and also with the funders that help, uh, help, uh, us provide the services. Some of the, some of the services that our agency provides include early intervention programming at schools, uh, therapy, uh, mental health and behavioral health support, LGBTQ-related issues, and then we also have transitioning how, transitional housing. Uh, we're in Sonoma County, uh, Napa County, Marin, and Alameda. So our community counseling program is individual, uh, therapy for five to twenty, for people five to twenty-five. Our partnership with Petaluma, uh, City Schools began in December of twenty seventeen with this program. So this program allows, uh, for our clinicians to come into the, to the schools and provide uh, up to five, uh, five sessions a month with each kid. So it's all, it's offered, uh, from, it's offered for the youth who are experiencing mild to moderate mental health-related issues, so it can range any, anywhere from, you know, childhood trauma, uh, depression, anxiety, a little bit of, you know, sometimes even self-harm or suicidal ideation.
So are the kids referred to you by the school?
Yes, so, so we partner with, uh, Linda and Nikki do a really good job of being our liaison and then the counselors at each of the sites, uh, have, have, who see the, the students more, have the better insight of who to refer. Um, part, part of it, uh, the students have to be Medi-Cal eligible, so, uh, that's.
You go directly with Medi-Cal then?
We do, so we get reimbursed to be, from Beacon.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And, uh, and it comes to Petaluma City Schools at no charge.
How many, sorry, ask about, about how many kids in general you're seeing?
Yes, so in, in general, so if you can go to the next slide, um, so I'll get there in just a second. So what's the benefits to Petaluma City School is the, the clinicians from the district get to see the client, the youth who are not, uh, Medi-Cal eligible. That means we get to serve a greater number of youth, right, by using, outsourcing to, Side by Side, right? Petaluma People's Services does a great job, uh, the Health Clinic do a really good job, but the thing is, is the wait lists are, are what's getting, uh, getting to be out of control, right? So I think that's where we come in to partner with the schools. So, in December of twenty seventeen to the rest of twenty eighteen, we served five youth and it was only at one school that we started getting embedded. Uh, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, we jumped to three schools and served twenty youth throughout, uh, throughout the time. This, this year, so far, we served thirty-four youth and we're at seven schools. So, and the average length of service is about eight months. Um, every six months, uh, the clinician will meet with the student and sometimes the family and do a reauthorization, reevaluate the goals, the treatment plan, and evaluate their CANS assessment. The CANS assessment is, uh, the, it's, the CANS assessment is the, the, the strengths and, was it the Strength and Needs Assessment? Sorry.
So how many clinicians do you have coming to our seven schools?
We have Denise and Hilda are primarily dedicated to Petaluma. We are able to upgrade, I mean, we have, I think, five clinicians in the program, uh, but depending on the referrals, we can allocate the time to each site.
So the two clinicians are serving thirty-four youths, that's pretty impressive.
Yes.
And they're all, um, therapists?
Yes. Yes, so the CANS is the, the, stands for the Child and Adolescent Needs and Strength Assessment. So the goal of the CANS is to focus on reducing the risk behaviors and increasing protective factors. Oh, if you go back, sorry. So those are the schools that, uh, the community counseling program is, is currently at, so. Awesome, so that's, so one more thing about Community Counseling is we do offer services at our Santa Rosa office as well. But we understand that that's, transportation issues can get in the way for our families. So we're working on collaborating with other partners here in town to be our different office space. Throughout the summer, Dave Rose in the past had set up access, gave us access to the district office. And we were able to see clients here at the district office so that, so the youth can continue to have services after they go off for summer. So that's, that was our Community Counseling Program. And our Youth Thrive Program has been, has been serving youth here at Petaluma for about ten years now. Before, it was C E Y D, and two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, there was a rebranding of the program, and it became Youth Thrive. So how our work reflects our mission? We all know that the teachers and the counselors, they're, they have a lot on their plate. And, and the budget here in California is becoming less and less. So what we do is we provide, we provide early intervention services for youth who, who are referred for truancy, for gain involvement, just low behavior, or bad behavior, or whatever it is. And we try to, and we try to work with them so they can go ahead and move forward.
How is that different from Side by Side?
Side by Side is our organization and Community Counseling, and Youth Thrive are programs within, within our organization.
Thanks.
So the structure of the program, it's ten weekly, ten weekly group sessions. We meet once a week, and we serve about ten, eight to, eight to twelve, eight to fifteen students. So it depends on the site and, and also the need of that particular group, right? So the junior highs, we tend to see a little bit less due to just developmentally, they're all over the place and it's hard to maintain the group dynamics. And then we do offer, this summer, we offered Youth Thrive during the summer school at Casa Grande. We had a bridge program from eighth graders going into ninth, and then we also, we also had a group for the high schoolers. So that was, that was something that we want hopefully to continue to do. We, we try to meet with our administrators and our counselors every time that we, that we're on campus. And, and also through email and through phone if need be, to just keep the communication flowing. Not just them to us, but also us passing on the information that, that we're seeing in the group, the trends, and just what's going on with our students. We also offer day trips and overnight trips, which this is the carrot that we dangling from. And then also basic needs case management. So what that would look like is if we're hearing in group that a student and their family may be homeless, right? We can, in collaboration with the counselors, we can find them different resources. I'm working on buying, we have, I'm working on getting a grant to, so we can provide bus passes to some of our youth. And that, that stems from our S A R, our S A R meetings that I participate in. A lot of, some, some of our youth are having trouble getting to, to school because they live on the outskirts. And if we're able to help them do this, you know, why not? So what do the groups entail? It's a, we, we do anger management, so it's aggression replacement training. But we also focus on the pro-social skill development from Thinking for Change. So that's your motivation, critical thinking, being able to, to listen and communicate. Granted, it, it is a little bit difficult sometimes, but we try to role-play and pass those skills forward. And then we have conflict resolution and gang prevention, if need be. Gang prevention was normally, well, in the past, we've focused more with San Antonio, with, with the dynamic there. And then also a little bit at Petaluma High with the, there was a white, like supremacy group and just trying to help, trying to help both groups just coexist. So who does Youth Thrive serve, right? To me, that, that seems, it's your potential, that's your leader, that's your potential college student, your athlete, your mechanic, right? That's who we serve, right? But something got in the way, whether it's childhood trauma, you know, coming here from a different country and being, you know, this is new, right? How do you find yourself in a new culture? We also, so, but those, they show their, their behaviors through, like I mentioned earlier, getting problematic behavior, right? Defiance, they, they may struggle with their relationship with adults, right? They may also skip class or find that it's okay to, to be late all the time. So how do we address those? So that's, that's who we, that's who we serve. And, and that's directly influenced through the counselors and the, and the principals and assistant principals at each site. And we're at Petaluma High School, all of the high schools, and then the junior highs as well.
What kind of staff facilitate the groups?
I, it's either I facilitate them or Vernon, and in terms of, would you like to know?
Just like your title or whatever?
Oh, we're youth specialists?
Oh, okay.
So I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a focus on community alternatives. And then Vernon does well.
Yeah, I'm from the nonprofit sector, so I just, yeah. I, we both put nonprofits, I've worked and I've worked with you guys, so. Big community asset.
So during the summer, we served a total of sixteen students. And I think, I believe eight of them were the junior, the bridge program, and then the twelve of them, or eight and eight, I think it was eight and eight. Yeah, it was the high school. During the fall, we served fifty-five students. Eighty-one percent of them, so they're co-ed sometimes. So some, some schools encourage it to be co-ed, and others prefer just to keep it separate. That's depending on the, Latinx, sixty-two percent. So the majority is, you know, we serve people of color, right? We do have students who, who are white as well, but predominantly they, they are of color and from low socioeconomic status. And that, and we get that information from the free and reduced.
Right. And boys.
Boys. Right. So from the fall, oh, the way that we, so how do we measure success? We work, we couldn't do this without the counseling team and the, and the principals and the assistant principals. They help us track the data. So we, we look at grades, their behavior, and then attendance. And when I say attendance, it's unexcused attendance. That's, that's what we focus on. The numbers look pretty good this time around, but they're not always like this. And, and just because they look good doesn't mean that it's going to continue to reflect the next time around. And if they look, if we don't do as well, doesn't mean that the, that the young people are making progress towards their goals, right? This, it's, it's hard because sometimes we don't see the direct correlation of the, of the services that we're, that we're providing. But maybe we'll see it six months later, three years later, or twelve years later when we see them grow. So some of the, these are a few pictures of some of the trips and the intensives that, that we do. So day trips can range anywhere from just like a ballpark, going to the Giants game, going to the movies, bowling, going on hikes, getting them out, showing them that they can do fun, fun things with their friends, with their family. And, and everything is, you know, alcohol-free, drug-free, everything is, you know, trying to build healthy habits. So if we have time, I'd like to show you guys this video of our wrapping trip. The American River.
Can you use professional guides or was it just you guys?
A professional guide. So that was, so we do two big overnight trips. One being the, our summer trip, which is we go camping right alongside the American River. And we stay there for two nights and three days. So the first night, we set up a tent. It's funny seeing everyone just struggle, right? They have to really rely on one another to, to build, to build up their tents. Because a lot, a lot of times, these are experiences, they're experiencing this, or these types of activities for the very first time. And the other is our snow trip. In the snow, we, we usually do just sledding, but there has been other times where we've taken snowboarding. So they'll, they'll do lessons for two hours during the morning, and then they, they can go ahead and try, try it on their own. And again, it's two nights and then three days. And, but in order for them to participate, they have to hit on the three topics that I talked about earlier, right? Increasing their, their grades, lowering their disciplinary referrals, and increasing their attendance. I'm sorry. Another, another type of, so we do pre-imposed surveys. And, and one of the surveys that we use is called the D A P, the Developmental Asset Profile. This is an example of scores from the past, and we haven't received the results for this year yet. But you can see it measures different categories from support, empowerment, you know, boundaries and expectations, constructive use of time, so what do you do when you're, you know, in your downtime, commitment to learning, and positive values, social competency and positive identity. So this is something that we focus on through our life skills and our programming. And then they get to go ahead and practice it when we go out on the outings, right? Having dinner in a public place and having to sit down, table manners, instead of just going to fast food and getting their food right away. So all of these, we try to implement when, when we go ahead in real life.
So do you look at these scores for every individual, or is it more as a?
It's a group.
Okay, yeah.
This, unfortunately, this only allows, I think, the minimum is thirty, but you have to, it's in groups.
I mean, that makes sense.
And it costs money.
So this is, you do, did you say that you did it twice a year, like at the beginning and at the end?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so you kind of can see that the increases here?
And again, sometimes it's not always pretty, right? And that's because I've found that sometimes it takes a little bit longer. When you first start the group, the young people put their best foot forward, right? They want to show that they got it all together. Yes, my family life is perfect, everything's going, you know what I mean? But then you start working with them, you start getting to the self, you know, reflecting on yourself and what's actually going on. And that's when you're able to tap in, like they're able to tap in within themselves how they really feel about what's going on, right? What's ongoing and available? So for the high schools, we just, we created a Youth Thrive Action Team. So the high school students were invited to form a committee to raise awareness on reducing the stigma around mental health. And how they're doing that is through making just poster presentations, and they're showing it off at their school site or to their peers. We hope that, I'm crossing my fingers, that they're able to do that at our next little fundraiser thing, so we can showcase them. We partner with the Real Choices Program of St. Quentin. That's really powerful. They are, I work with Ernie Pulliam, he's a retired C E O. And we go in and is, they get a tour of the yard, and he explains the different dynamics. And then we go into the education building where the inmates who are made up of, of men who have committed crimes when they're as young as fifteen to seventeen, twenty years old, and, you know, are there for a very long time. And they get to speak to them about their value of education and how it really took them to go there to be able to take their education seriously, right? And they talk about their attitudes, their values, and then their behaviors, and if they're aligned or not. And then, so we go. They get to have lunch with them, and then it's like breakout sessions, they get like one-on-ones with them. So it's beneficial for the youth and it's very powerful. It's not yelling and screaming at them, but it's also very impactful for the, for the men inside, right? That's their, one way for them to be able to repair the harm that they've done in the past.
So when you come back from something like that, do you have a group meeting?
We do.
It must be pretty.
Yes, it's, it's really powerful and it's moving, it's very moving. They write, or we, part of the, part of the process afterwards is they write a, a letter. So it could be directed to one person or just in the room. And then I, I go ahead and get it to Ernie, the C E O, and he gets it to them just as a way of thank you and, and for them to really reflect and think. And sometimes they get cross-stried as well.
Do you all, when you're doing demographics and stuff, ask if they have a family member incarcerated?
We do.
Yeah. If they do overlap?
Some of them, yes. So, so that's a question that I think we actually took away this year because it was really intrusive. But we do, we do ask the other question, or through, through our groups, it comes out, right? And then collaborations with Mentor Me. Martin, big part of Youth Thrive, used to be an employee for Youth Thrive, amazing person. He's now at Mentor Me, and we hope to, to continue like our partnership with them. Petaluma Police Department, so we have a few volunteers from the Petaluma Police Department who go on our trips. And not in plain clothes, in plain clothes. And then on the last day, the last evening, they go ahead and they tell them, we gather around and they go ahead and express what they do for a living. And you get this big, you know, that they're able to just have a good time. They're people just like us. And again, it helps the young people understand that, bridge the, the gap. But it also helps the police officers, you know, understand the kids, which if they see them around town, they may, you know, they may actually take it a little bit easier on them. Job Corps, we recently went and visited Job Corps, which is in the city. And that was, I think we only took like four students, but those four students were at the alternative side, so at Sonoma Mountain and Carpe Diem. And they're kind of struggling with their credits. So we're just trying to find alternatives, even if it's not a four-year, four-year route, right? What else is out there? Because you're sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and you're thinking, okay, what am I going to do next? You get that anxiety of, okay, what are my options? And what we want to do there is just kind of show, show what else is out there. And that's just some of our funders for, for Youth Thrive. Youth Thrive is, we don't receive money from the government as well, so we rely directly on the partnership with the school districts. And then we offset whatever isn't paid, because the cost isn't ever paid fully by the schools. So then we go ahead and we get funders, proposals, and then direct contributions as well. Thank you.
Sorry, I just have a question. I just had a really quick question. So this is just local, this isn't like a national, a national organization or a state now? I, I might have missed it at the beginning. I, I might have missed it at the beginning.
No. So we are at all of the junior highs and high schools here in Petaluma.
And Napa and?
So Hillsburg and Marin.
Right. But since, but the, the over, you know, the side-by-side is, is just?
Just here in Bay Area.
Just been generated from this local area. Fabulous. Thank you.
All right, and now we're math instructional materials pilot and selection process at Mary Collins.
So thank you for having us tonight. I think this is probably only the second time I've had an opportunity to speak with Mary Collins. The first time actually in the capacity of being a principal at Mary Collins. And so I'm very excited to be here. And while I have the floor, I just want to say, I had an opportunity to work with Adrian when I was over at Kennelworth, and the work they do with the students in our school district is absolutely amazing. And I can't speak highly enough of the services and the work I do to our kids. Also gotta just throw a bone to Maureen, she's not here, but I worked with her on the grant process and she helps manage our fund at Cherry Valley. And these two people are just really great, you know, partners to our district. Today I have a small team here though. From Mary Collins, I have Mary Akers-Bell, who's one of our two-three teachers. And Lisa Reed, who is one of our fourth-line teachers. And I also have one of my parents here, Rajeev Ramani. And we were all a part of looking at math instruction at our school and to create ways for us to do a better job teaching math to our students. Last year, Cherry Valley hired seven new teachers. And we only have a staff of fifteen teachers. So it was almost half, yeah. So we went through a huge transformation there. But it was a great opportunity for us to really take stock and inventory of the curriculum materials that we had, because the teachers were brand-new and they were coming in and, and what do I have and, and what lessons should I be teaching? And they were collaborating in their grade-alike groups. And what we discovered is we had a lot, we really did. We had everyday math materials, we had engaging work materials, we had Fosno math units, and we had Mars tasks. And we were all using all these wonderful materials in very wonderful and creative ways, but they weren't really meeting the needs of our unique setting at Cherry Valley. We serve our students in multi-age classrooms. K-ones are together, two-threes are together, four-fives are together, and then the middle school is six, seven, and eight. And that has many wonderful benefits to our students. It gives them an opportunity to live with their teachers for two years, so those teachers get to know them. It eliminates some of the need for the second year to do all the diagnostics, because they already know where their kids are, so they can just pick up and keep running with them. So we can move them faster, farther in the two years that we live with the same teacher. But it does create that challenge too, because now you've got this really broad range of learners in your classroom. And so we scheduled a meeting to sit down and talk and discuss what we thought was the best approach. And we brought Rajeev on as a consultant. Rajeev is an expert in math instruction. He is a Sonoma State professor and works in the Teacher Curriculum Program. And I'm going to let him talk a little bit about what he heard when he came to our meeting and we discussed our math program and curriculum resources at Cherry Valley.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So my name's Rajeev Ramani. I'm a math teacher educator at Sonoma State, assistant professor in math education, and I'm also a parent of two children. My son's in third grade and I have a daughter in kindergarten. So I'm here to support Mary Collins' Cherry Valley's decision to adopt Bridges' math curriculum. Just going to give you just a little bit of background on like what I learned about Bridges and what I've, how I've interacted with it too. So Bridges is a very well-designed curriculum that really fits the needs of what Cherry Valley is looking for, particularly their approach to teaching and learning. So in particular, you know, as Principal Schluter mentioned, that Mary Collins at Cherry Valley is a multi-age classroom, heterogeneous classroom. And the way that learning is looked at is that it's a social endeavor, right? It's socially constructed, it's co-constructed through communication, through interactions, you know, so. And the aim is to, for problem-solving, to happen collaboratively, to think about multiple perspectives, how people are looking, children are looking at mathematics, and really using those critical thinking skills. So Bridges really allows for students to look at, to make and test their conjectures and really record thinking. They solve problems using like visual models and manipulatives. And then this is my favorite part, is that students talk, discussion. That's what I do at Sonoma State, I'm all about math discussions. And they talk, they move, and they engage actively with the curriculum. So, and then, so that puts then the onus on teachers to really promote discourse in the classroom. And that's an important piece of Bridges' curriculum. And discussion happens in lots of ways, partner groups, small groups, whole class discussions, right? And Bridges really supports that discourse of exploration and curriculum's really focused on conceptual understanding, math reasoning, which is really important, and then procedural fluency as well. So the middle school at Cherry Valley, they use CPM. And Bridges is a really good, like connecting curriculum that really matches with the middle school curriculum. It allows this whole idea of exploration and discussion and it's really based around group work settings. And so, and so it's a really nice fit. If you guys are familiar with the Ed Report, the Ed Report reviews different curriculum out there and it gave Bridges' curriculum its highest rating across their three areas, focused coherence, rigor in math practices, and usability. So when I was in the meetings, a lot of this conversation came out about what Cherry Valley is all about, how we've approached things, and how, there's a need also to have a common language. And I think it's, it's important that across the K-five school, that they have a similar curriculum that they can work together and collaborate on. So if Bridges is adopted, I would ask you to consider support in the, you know, the professional development around it, because that's really important. Not just saying, here, this is the curriculum you can use and this is how you use it, but also what are the instructional practices that connect to this curriculum and how we can support discourse in group work? So, thank you for that.
Hi, I'm Lisa Reed and I teach fourth and fifth grade. I am really excited about math. I'm in my seventeenth year of teaching on my math journey. I think it's really important to have a really good program that would be the K-five for our school. I don't have a master's in math, so I need a program to help me be masterful in, in teaching math. And I need to be able to discourse, hey, I did this with my class, you know, go to the teacher next door to me and be able to talk the same language. We're teaching from the same programs, we're not just pulling from random places. So it's super important at our school to, for you to be open to that. I'm here to talk about data and what happened is, on this math journey, because I'm super into math, I never thought I'd be this way because I struggled in math, but I want kids to think math is fun and I want them to think that they're good at it, because you can be good at it. It's how you look at it, it's the perspective and it's the communication that you're doing. And I've been successful in that, I've gotten a really meaningful letters from some of our graduates about how they were ready for sophomore math in high school as a freshman. And they credited it to my enthusiasm in math and how that carried over into their thinking about math. And so that's infectious to me. I want to be the best teacher that I can be and I need tools to do that. I happened to, by chance, come across a really fabulous tool a few years ago that was in an app form, and it gave us a lot of data. And my partner and I, Trinity Pelkoff, started writing Rotary Grants to have this app at our school. And we started using it, started collaborating using it, and it's called Freckle. And you probably know about Freckle now because I brought it to the math community. And what that does is it gives us a lot of data. When we would get kids coming into our grade, we could give them a pre-test and what we would find is that they were, had Swiss cheese holes all over the place of what they knew and what they didn't know. And what I'm hoping is that if we have a curriculum at our school, that we can then decrease the amount of Swiss cheese holes that we're trying to backfill while we're trying to fill the grades that we're supposed to be teaching, but then have that, those Swiss cheese holes lessened. But then also have another piece, we have the Freckle piece. I can catch my kids up, I have excellent data, I can show any kind of data you want. I can prove to my parents that your kids are learning. It's, it's a fabulous tool, but then I can also have the curriculum piece and it's just super important. Mary was my mentee teacher for two years and she's a new teacher. And, you know, she needed a lot of support in math and I was able to give that to her through the program that I was using at the time. But it would be so nice if we could talk about that K-five at our school. So I'm going to give the time over to Mary, who's actually piloted the program, and still talk about that.
So I'm Mary Akers-Bell. I'm not one of the seven who got hired on last year, I was hired the year before. But I've had an opportunity to pilot the lessons for Bridges through the temporary online subscription that we have. And some of the things I saw immediately that were beneficial for the students is that it was accessible. And that's hard when you're teaching second and third grade. I think it's really important for us as a multi-age classroom to have programs that have a low entry point so that everybody can be invited in, but then a high ceiling for my second, third graders who want to and are doing fifth and sixth grade math. I also found it very engaging for all students, which is rare for all of the program pieces we've been teaching. We'll get a few here in Maryland, there's some who weren't engaging, but with the lessons I've done with Bridges, all of the students were actively wanting to be involved. It has really nice meaty tasks with manipulatives and things that the children can be manipulating for multiple days, so they have the confidence, oh, I did that, I'm going to go deeper into this. And it also has skills practice that's hidden in games so that it's engaging for a lot of them, and direct instruction. And I think it really helps align the scope and sequence across the year, is my hope with having a curriculum that I'm not going in different parts. And so I would like you to consider Bridges.
All right, back to me. So the next, the next step is that I think you're going to see in the next meeting that we're going to ask for this to be approved so that we can purchase the curriculum, get some professional development, like on the calendar for our teachers, get some release days for them to share some of their successful experiences with implementation. And so that's what we hope to happen next in the future. So that concludes our presentation, but I do want to invite you to our Jubilee while I'm got you here, right? So this is our annual fundraiser, it's going to be a great success, I can already predict. We're at the Kavanaugh Center this year, it's April 18th, and you can get tickets now at Mary Collins. And we would love to see some of you there to support our fundraising efforts.
And what exactly is this, the Jubilee?
Oh, so it is a, it's a dinner, silent live auction with music and all kinds of other fun activities. Last year, we did vintage circus and so it was very circus-themed. And so we had performers and magicians and jugglers and it's quite the show. We are a visual and performing arts school, so don't think that doesn't make its way into our fundraisers. So I'm sure if you come, you'll have a great time and we'd love to see some of you there. Thanks.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. No, go.
How many other teachers were involved in it?
Yeah. So I believe all of the two-three teachers have tried at least one lesson. There's another teacher, friend of mine, I forgot to say this earlier. In the two-three, we have two new teachers as of last year, and then me, who's doing my second year in two-three. And one of the things that Corinne Kavanaugh, who's one of the new teachers, really likes about Bridges is it helps teach the teachers, how the teachers, which has been really good. And I, that's what I think too, is it's really well-explained lesson plans. Does that answer your question?
We also have, the K-ones have really been kind of diving deep into it. Actually, one of the K-one teachers was kind of the catalyst for this whole exploration. Her name was Annie Cozen, she really wanted to be here tonight, she couldn't make it, right? She was the one who said, you know, we should really think about Bridges. When I was at NAPA teaching math, I used that program and I really liked it. And so that was kind of the first time that that was introduced. And then we had like a second person recommend it to us and then, of course, we went, we took three of our teachers to the CPM Math Conference. I thought CPM, CMA?
The CNC North.
C-N-C North, yeah. So just to give, just to give Rajeev some more props, let's see. He has come to our school and done an after-school math enrichment program that he charges a small fee for. Students, of course, who can't afford it and want to participate can access the options through the PTA. He donated that money back to the school for us to go to the math conference. And so I just want to say thanks for that. And we went and again, we were presented with some amazing, you know, Bridges' curriculum. And so it just seemed like it was, that all the signs were pointing us in that direction. And now that we've actually experienced it, we, we see why, why it's so highly recommended.
Another thing is, is that Jason Sutter from the math committee also said that at his school when he was principal, they had Bridges and he really loved it and had a lot of success with the teachers that are using it, so.
It's just really nice to hear enthusiasm from teachers.
I just wanted to add, when we did our district math curriculum adoption, what, five years ago now? So, you know, you know, Mary Collins didn't adopt, you know, completely the same program as the rest of the people did. So that's why they had, they've kind of chosen their own materials and decided to go that route. So this was, you know, this was a great opportunity for them to do their own process and, and especially with, with newer staff, be able to select something that they could all do in coherence, so. Glad to be able to support them.
One of the reasons why we didn't take everyday math also is because they had trainers come to our site at least two times in the seventeen years I've been there, and they could not explain to us how to use it in a multi-age. This is really difficult because of the spiraling. So the way that it starts, you would just literally have to stay with the one grade the whole way. And so we just need something a little bit more open, a little more what Rajeev was describing. So it's, it's a really hard program to use. I tried to use it, it's just really hard, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I can be your, your guest. You can teach me math.
Okay, move it on. It's time to comment on the public.
Just to feel like me.
So we have, we have a couple of speakers today and I just very quickly want to read a little blurb at the beginning so that everybody's clear. Under Government Code Section, blah, blah, blah. Members of the public have the right to address the government board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. And we welcome those comments. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. And we have three different ones, so that's not an issue. While the above-referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although the board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully, take notes, and value input from the public. So, let's hear about Lumicon from Mike Watten.
I was going to miss it, too.
All right, thanks. Good evening, my name's Mike Watten, teacher at Cherry Valley. Also, I want to throw props out to, thanks. Props to Andre, he worked with us at Crossroads for seven years. Fantastic work, you know, really made a difference with the students. So, I'm here to give you a report on Lumicon. If a lot of you don't know what Lumicon is, it is Petaluma's premier comic book festival. This year, we had probably more than 3,500 people attend this one-day event that's put on by the Petaluma High School Library, Casa Cravate Library, the Reetle Library. And just, I want to share a couple of the highlights. We had probably twenty-four professional artists and forty student artists, fifth grade and up, at the table right next to the professionals, sell their art. One of the highlights, there's several Cherry Valley highlights out there, but our middle school band opened the show at the gates when the people walked in, the middle school band was playing and they played several tunes, We Will Rock You, a couple of Queen tunes, and they played the theme from Star Wars and Star Wars characters. And they played the theme from Star Wars and Star Wars characters. Kavanaugh to join the fray and the day just went on and on and it was just fantastic. Three Charity Valley students took the top three prizes for the short story writing contest. Take first place and tied for second for two of them. One, a couple of the highlights, we've gotten better at or more broad in our interpretation of what we're doing for the community. So we had one pair of students from McNear School, from Ms. Turco's class. They took three, three certain stories from like 15 other students or fellow students. And they illustrated, made into a graphic novel. They printed 75 copies of their graphic novel, sold all 75 for five bucks a piece. And then donated half their proceeds to Patty at Copperfield for the Bookstormers Program. So it was really amazing that, you know, kids are getting out there. Also, another group from Cherry Valley, girls were, had a bake sale for, for the Animals Australia Hope from the Ashes. They raised more than $550 for this situation. So we were very impressed by that. And I just wanna really encourage you to be part of this. It's an amazing opportunity for these kids. They're kind of frizzy kids that don't get a lot of support. We had like more than 40 kids in costume that came dressed up. We had a costume parade with the little kids and the bigger kids competed for prizes. And it's just a really amazing opportunity for these to show off their stuff. And I personally wanna thank Matthew for being there and Cliff. I think Patty was there, but the name tags got switched on us tonight, so. But again, our design is always made by students. It's really a student-driven situation, so if you get a chance next year, it'll be our seventh year.
Can I just say that it was really inspiring? I've been, I've heard about it for so long and finally got there. And it was just, and I went mainly to the kids, cause you know, I'm a school board member. And, and I just, they were so into what they were doing. They were so talented, you know, they had great stories, but they were, they owned so much of what they were doing. And you could, it was so inspiring. I so thank you for, for doing this.
Many of the kids, you know, I think one girl sold out her stuff, made $200 in the day. And I would say to those kids, like, you made $200 today. If you talk to these professionals sitting next to you, they're probably in their mid twenties before they made $200 and that was over like a year. It's a great opportunity for these kids to brand new. We've had one girl that was with us for the last, she wasn't here this year, but she was with us since she was 15, came back for five years. And she's a syndicated comic book artist in the newspapers and they have, in the Central Valley and stuff like that. So it's a great stepping stone for these kids to show their art and show their skills.
Well, thank you very much. Amy Turco and Nancy Ryan.
Janice Phillips, I'm bringing that show.
That's good, the more the merrier. So we have the vital important role of student advisor, mentor me advocate on McNear campus.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nancy Ryan. I'm the student advisor at McNear. I've been with Mentor Me for over 13 years and district employee for many years, a parent in the district. So I just wanted to mention how much of an impact being a student advisor has on, on the climate of the community, the school, and how it can positively impact so many people, not just the students. You know, I'm here as a flexible person for, for teachers to have somebody when a little crisis or a little intervention is needed, I can always pop in and let the teachers teach. You know, take the child out or, and let the teacher focus on the majority of the class.
Are you, are you there full-time or?
I'm there till 1 o'clock every day.
Every day, okay.
Yeah, so, so I do a drop-off. I do drop-off in the morning. I also think that just being at the crosswalk in the morning is so important, even though it's a little early and a little cold later. But you know, I noticed a couple of things. It's probably my favorite part of my job is greeting everybody coming through. And I noticed that it helps the kids and sometimes the parents with social interaction. So you know, to look, some of my kids don't know how to look you in the eye and say, oh, good morning and things like that. So I believe that's an important part of my job and sets a tone for the rest of the day. So, so another thing I have done is I implemented a homework club after school on campus. And it's twice a week. I have about an average of 25 kids that show up at homework club. I have a teacher with me all the time. But I, out of that, we have a lot of like English learners. Some of their parents, especially the moms, were coming up to us and say, you teach my kid English. You teach my English, you teach me English? And we're like, hmm, okay. So, so we started putting a little mom's group together of English learner mothers. And we did that all last year and they brought their kids with them. So we found out that the parents' grade level was probably just about what the kids' grade level was. So we had some, the librarian pick out some books so the kids could read to the parents in English and the parents could read to the kids in English. So we love that. So that was highly successful. So we also did, I started, and these are unique to every school. This is just what I found out our campus needed, that we had a lot of siblings that needed support, that their sibling had special needs. So we kind of forget those kids of what they go through, you know, at home or even at school when your, you know, your brother, your sister has special needs and who knows what's gonna happen on campus. Has a big impact on their siblings. So we started a little support group for them. We started with just at McNear and then it just sort of grew. And so we invite everybody from Petaluma, any sibling of a childhood with special needs can come to our, our support group at the Kavanaugh. So we did that. So I love my job and it's a big, far-reaching job and never-ending. And I love it and I would just like to you guys to consider making it a priority to get a special person, which is a student advisor on campuses, not only, well, to most, to all the schools, but especially those schools that really can't afford it in their PTA budget. Cause that's how I got to be the student advisor at McNear. Any questions?
Oh, so you were paid for through PTA funds, through McNear? Thank you.
And here is my friend Amy.
Second, everything she said, Nancy really understated a lot of what she does and what she provides. And we had some incredible presentations tonight about intervention programs. But what we're doing is prevention at the very basic level. And I think that it's an incredibly worthwhile position to fund for the district. If you've probably worked out the numbers, although I can't do all that stuff, you probably find that you're getting a lot more bang for your buck in mental health services from what we're providing than a counselor 20 minutes a week when a kid's getting a dad class, right? So Nancy, it does take a super special person. And Nancy is the most trusted adult on our campus. She's working with students who have really burned their bridges with their teachers. Students who have really, there's no, there's, they're, they're beyond the line already. And Nancy is the one that they trust. Nancy's the one that they go to and Nancy is the one who finds them what they need. And those are all things that we would love to do, but we have to get over our anger at them first. No, it's not like that, of course not, but she can do it in a way that we can't. We have to have a certain relationship with them and she needs to have a certain relationship with them. Before there was Nancy, we had a couple of other folks. And one person who was with us for a really short time was Janice Phillips, who I wanna introduce you. She contacted me, I ran into her and I was talking about how excited I was that the school district was starting to put money into more prevention, early, early education and prevention. And she always loved her job and we loved her, but it wasn't a living wage for her. So I just wanna make sure you guys know this face and know this person. She, this has been what, six, seven years ago?
I can't give it up.
Yeah. So tell her, tell her.
I'm gonna, my name's Janice Phillips and I'm gonna speak to you from just a few different hats. I grew up in this district. I'm a graduate of this district. I'm a former employee of this district. I think I was employed for eight, eight years. And I'm a parent of this district. So my son is now in seventh grade at Belinda Junior High School. And he was toddling when I was at McNear. And what I would like to speak to most is the tangible community connection that the student advisor brings to the environment. So you have somebody, when Nancy's in the morning, when I was there was a little different. It came a little later in the day. I would have my time in the classrooms, be out on my recess and then I'd be there at the end of the day. So if something came up, if there was a particular situation with friends at recess, somebody who was having a hard time at lunch, who I had to speak with outside of class, that was an opportunity for me to stop that mom at the crosswalk and go, hey, this little thing came up today. You may just wanna check in, but just so you know, this is what's going on. A piece of information that otherwise in the grand scheme of everybody's day would have been lost. And is really small, but, but huge for that one student who's trying to so fiercely find their way in this brighter system. So I just, I really, really would like you guys to consider this. It's something that I am incredibly passionate about and it's something that I speak about all the time. It's on my social media, it's with every single dinner party I go to. It's all the other parents that I speak with and they're like, you don't know what's going on. And I'm like, let's, this would be the perfect person for you to talk to on your campus if they were there. So I just, please consider what is being said today.
Thank you. Peter Costas. SCO days.
Good evening. Peter Costas, Sonoma County Office of Education trustee. And just a couple of just quick things here. Sure, you know about it, of course. Today at SCO, there was a workshop on the coronavirus and with public health. Hopefully that's just information that schools will be able to get as talking points if parents are concerned or staff are concerned. And I understand they're gonna try to put a PowerPoint together and put it in Spanish too. So it's really good that they get that out there because of the fears and everything like that. The second thing, last week, Dr. Harrington posted a letter on Supreme Court's decision on public charge and expanding the rule of public charge. So you have legal immigrants, if they're on any kind of public assistance for what, a year? They could deny, be denied their, their legal path to citizenship. So the message was, schools are safe places and we encourage our parents that have not to be afraid. And not, neither kids free in public, free of reduced lunch, because that's one of the programs parents might think that, oh, if I get my kids on free reduced lunch, I'm gonna get hoarded and I'm not. So we wanna make, we wanna make sure our parents realize school's a very safe place. Third thing, on February 25th at SCO, a free workshop by Carl Coben of School Legal Services on pending legislation. So that's geared for superintendents and trustees. I forget what time it is, but it's maybe morning or afternoon. If it's morning, breakfast, if it's afternoon, lunch. If it's dinner, it's dinner. But that'd be on February 25th and you could look at that at the SCO website. Yes, at SCO. And just the last thing, it's a great presentation from Mentor Me. You know, I'm also on the board of Mentor Me and you've probably heard that Mentor Me has now merged with Petaluma People Services.
Oh, that's official?
Just happened.
That's official now?
Yes. It's been official for a couple of weeks now. And we're, as a board, we're very happy about that. It's gonna give us the financial stability as a nonprofit, because nonprofits, it's hard to be a nonprofit. So the work of our vision, continuing, providing mentors, connecting mentors with mentees in schools and Petaluma area will continue to happen. So what's happening up here with, with Petaluma People Services and Mentor Me Board? That's just up here at the school site level, providing services that they were just talking about. Seamless, counseling service, all seamless. So we're very pleased about that. So thank you for your time.
Report on activities, of course, from us, the school board members. We did board office hours today at Pen Grove, Adult Education Graduation, the resilience movie, Polyclass Foundation Presentation, Website Review, Lumicon and Marijuana and Vaping Presentation at Petaluma High School. And now, approval of a consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, are there, is there anything here that rises to the level of?
Do the children have fun on their field trip?
Yeah, the field trip's amazing. I wanna go to York.
New York, for my band is going to New York.
Okay, so shall we vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Action items. Resolution 1920-14 at the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, identifying needed credentials and certificates to be skipped in a certificated layoff process in the 2019-20 school year. And I just wanna, I'll remove that.
I said it.
Okay, this is something that happens every year. It's something we need to do. We have dead, certain deadlines if we're gonna lay anybody off. Hopefully that won't happen. But so this is kind of boilerplate and we do it every year.
Oh, yeah, I remember this from last year.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And 10.1.2, Resolution 1920-15 at the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, establishing the criteria of determining the order of layoff among certificated employees with the same seniority date in the 2019-20 school year.
Move to a grid. One second.
Comments?
This is kind of another boilerplate, one of the year.
It's the same.
It's the same.
Oh, I did wanna ask, is PFT, is it part of the contract? Do you have to redo it?
It's not a negotiated.
It's not a negotiated item?
No, no. It's basically the district says is we really need to make sure we save all our bilingual teachers.
Right.
So even if, that's kind of what it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Business services. Resolution 1920-6, oh no, I left something out. Approval, sorry. Approval of the amended certificated salary schedules.
I move.
A second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business services. Resolution 1920-16 at the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma, authorizing the execution. God, that sounds awful. Don't pause it. Authorizing the execution of the amended joint powers agreement and bylaws and adopt separate, the separate documents for each program of the Redwood Empire Schools Insurance Group, known as RESIC.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Our insurance keeps going up, but it's not our fault.
And it's not RESIC's fault either. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Finally, discussion information, revised administrative regulation tobacco and nicotine use.
First reading.
Yeah, first reading.
I mean, not first reading, I'm sorry.
It's the second.
This is, this is the AR and I'm noticing, essentially what it is, is I add in, in the AR below, known as GP, there should be a line that's redacted in there about the suspensions. As students who violate this prohibition, shall be subject to disband or resecretes would may result in suspension of school. So that's gonna be across the rule, although it goes up there.
But it's may result.
That's a may. And, and then in the AR that's attached in the agenda, you'll see that essentially what I did was I went in and I called it now tobacco and nicotine use. So that's very clear, it's not just cigarettes, it's tobacco and nicotine. And then I wrote, you know, it can be adjusted in any form, so it includes these cigarettes, vapes, you know. And kind of went down the list so that it's not just assumed that what we're doing is for cigarettes only. And then also in going into CSBA, I kind of looked at the language that they had and to see if they had anything else for tobacco. And they did have some policy around for pregnancy as well and support.
Yeah, I like that.
So I added all that in as well. Those are, those are both I liked in there.
Yeah, I like it. Any questions or? Okay, future business.
Can we get a discussion and action item on getting menstrual products in schools for the next school year?
We're working on it.
Cool.
Oh, you are?
We're collecting data. We're collecting data, so.
I like data. Cool. Well, then whenever the data is ready, I would like to see it, which I'm sure you were going to do anyway.
Yes, you were. Thank you. Any other future business?
Well, we want to discuss the date for the discussion of the government.
I'm in my reading. I have annotated text.
And we also need to talk about future office hours. Because we don't have anything planned after today.
After today.
Am I right?
Yeah, right.
So.
So we, we have a bunch of schools. We still have to go.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to do that. I mean, I don't care, but I don't want to waste people's time unless looking at our calendars, if more.
Yeah.
Well, let's just at least look at.
Let's do the discussion, because I, I would like to do it before March 5th, if possible.
Oh, for the book?
Yeah, for the book.
Yeah, let's decide on a date for the discussion.
Yeah, for the discussion, because that's publicly noted, so, yeah.
Okay.
Let's just do it at the next meeting.
We can discuss it at the next meeting.
Oh, well, we.
Are we having a whole discussion?
We're going to have a whole discussion.
Oh.
Okay. Well, it would have to be, for me, if it's during the week, it has to be in the evening.
Yeah, me too.
I think for everybody it does.
Yeah.
I don't care if you want to have a part of the meeting.
I only have it on until 7 o'clock at night.
No, you don't.
I'm not complaining.
Okay, so, should we just throw out a date?
Sure.
Well, you guys are much. Oh, Sheldon had said.
Well, because I'm thinking, maybe we should do it.
Sheldon had mentioned that he couldn't do it on a Saturday.
Well, if he wanted to do it during the week, I was thinking, we already give up our Tuesdays. So maybe Tuesday, the 3rd.
Of March?
Yeah. Well, that's before the 5th of March.
Oh, so just do it in the evening that day?
I don't know.
Isn't there, is it there?
That's super Tuesday.
There's like a, the.
It better be.
The special ed meeting.
Is that on the 3rd?
What do you mean, what's on the 3rd?
There's like an all-day meeting?
There's a meeting tomorrow.
I know, there's a meeting tomorrow. And then you had said two other ones, one of which is our birthday.
Oh, yeah, birthday.
Well, you. You said.
So is it the 3rd, which one was it?
You told me the dates. Yeah, March 3rd.
March 3rd.
So that's not going to work, because I want to, I won't be able to go.
Okay. And what's the next meeting, the 25th?
Yeah.
If you do the 3rd, you could, what do you, like 5:30 start?
Yeah.
We can do it on the 3rd and 5:30 start, and not just be really tired. I might be all crazy.
Yeah, I can't go.
Because I'm going to be in a meeting all day. That's all right. Your guys are working all day.
We work all day, yeah.
Hey, I'm old, and I've already worked all day.
Then he, then he can't.
Okay, so March 3rd?
March 3rd.
What time?
5:30? Is that what?
I think so.
Can you, you can't do the 3rd? Angela Davis is there on March 3rd?
Angela Davis is going to Petaluma State?
I feel like they ain't paying her no bill. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going on the 3rd anymore.
We're not doing the 3rd?
I want to go to that.
Me too.
I've heard her speak a couple of times. She's dynamic.
I probably lost her because she wouldn't take the oath to swear to not be a communist.
We all have to take that stupid oath.
Well, there's some guy in Montana that says it's okay to shoot.
Okay, no politics. All right, so are we doing, are we doing the 3rd? No.
What about the March 24th?
Yeah, why doesn't that bring a question?
Well, I just hope, I, I'm on the 26th. Okay, well.
Well, you have a reader for this one.
Yeah.
I just wanted to sit back and read for you guys and discuss it.
Well, yeah, but later.
Wednesday is work for me, if they work for you.
Wednesday's fine.
Wednesday, the 4th?
Or the 26th.
The 26th would be better for you. That would be great.
Yeah.
March 26th?
No.
February. February.
Oh, wait a second.
February 26th.
I think Sheldon said it was okay.
As long as we have Quorum.
But he wants to be, no, he wants to be here. He has to be here.
So, okay, well, I can do the Wednesday, the 26th. That just means I have to get reading.
February 26th?
Oh. I finally got gilded into reading. It's fast. I wasn't going to, but Maddie pulled me.
What's that again? She's a bully?
Well, it's a discussion item. You can always, you can always, because Sheldon will be there, and you can do your dates for your.
Oh, why don't we do it that, that's perfect. So we'll do, we'll do book discussion and office hour dates. On Wednesday, the 26th?
Sure.
Cool.
What time on Wednesday? 5:30?
Yeah.
5:30 or 6, yeah.
Well, what's, you're coming the longest way, so what would be better for you?